Okay, we'll go ahead and call to order the Thursday, August 13th, 2020 meeting of the Clive City Council. The clerk, please call the role.
Sheriff Sirxina.
Here.
Council members Klein.
Here.
Edwards.
Here.
McCoy.
Councilman McCoy is about to enter the meeting.
Judkins.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
And is McCoy in yet?
One moment.
Okay.
Councilman McCoy, this is Pete. Can you hear us all right?
Hello?
We've got you. We're taking role, council.
Please state your presence.
We'll take that as a yes.
Yes, sir. I was trying to unmute.
Well, great. Everyone's present and accounted for. Nice to see everybody again on one screen. We almost got there at the last meeting, but here we are again. So thank you all for your efforts as we continue our virtual setup in making that successful. So again, welcome. We have a young scout, John Mounthand, available with us to say the pledge for us or to lead us in the pledge tonight. Young John, if you'd unmute yourself and just introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about where you are with scouting these days.
So a little bit about myself is I enjoy swimming and I really enjoy scouting.
Go ahead, John.
My ring for Boy Scouts is first class and as you probably know, I'm working on the Communication Rear Bench.
Well, good for you. You know, it's really nice of you to come lead us in the pledge tonight. And you know, we may have you back again if you're so willing. So I'm going to have you do that for us and Pete's going to control it. So really, you're going to be the only one who's saying the pledge tonight. And so we have good audio quality, okay? Why don't you go ahead and lead us, John?
My pleasure allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, young John, for being with us and for leading us in the pledge. Thank you, everybody. Let's move on to approval of the agenda. I'm not aware of any changes.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Eric. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? Okay, all in favor? All right, very good. Next item is citizens' presentation. Now, this is where anybody on the participating in the meeting with us can address the council on an item that is not on the agenda this evening. Is there anybody here to do that? And if you are here to do so, please advise Pete so he can let you in.
To catch my attention, folks, I'm going to go ahead and enable the chat. That's one way to do it. But then also you can use the raise your hand function if you click at the bottom of your screen in the black bar where it says participants. For those of you who aren't host or co-host, you'll see a little icon where you can raise your hand. Mayor, I'm going to ask some of these folks who are just participating by phone whether they would like to comment at this time or not.
Yes, not on the agenda, right?
Yeah, for any item not on the agenda. Caller at 0923, would you like to comment or make a presentation at this time for an item not on the agenda? Okay, I'm going to take that as a no. Caller at 8502, is there anything you would like to present at this time that's not on the agenda? And I recognize this next number here is Jim, so we don't need to check that one. And then a person calling from Kevin's iPhone. Is there anything that you'd like to present at this time that's not on the agenda? Okay, Mayor, I do not see any other hands that are up at this time.
Okay, seeing none, we'll move to the items.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Michael. Further discussion? Hearing none of the council, please vote. And passes five to zero. Okay, now, our first item is a presentation regarding process improvement from the fire department. And Chief Helen, you're here to guide us in this presentation, so welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity to come rag on the fire department for a little bit. Wanted to take a few minutes just to give an opportunity and talk about a process improvement that we did through our medication audit process. As you know, with the paramedics on the ambulance, we carry 30 medications on the ones on the fire that we use to help with everything from pain control, emergency lifesaving medications like epinephrine and things for dire emergencies. And part of the process that we have to do as paramedics is there are three agencies that control or are very, they're the rulemaking authorities for our medications with the Bureau of Emergency and Trauma Services through the state, the Iowa Board of Pharmacy, and then also the Drug Enforcement Administration on a federal level. And so we have several rules that we have to follow. One of the things we did as part of our control policies is that we have an outside auditor come in periodically to check and make sure that we are in compliance with all of those rules and the rulemaking bodies. And we were very pleased to find that in a very detailed audit of our 2018 record-keeping and the medication control processes, that there were eight recommendations or actually eight discrepancies that were found out of well over several thousand entries and 11 recommendations for improvement. So that information, I believe, was already forwarded to you in the council packets. But of the eight discrepancies that were found, seven of those were actually found during our regular monthly audit process that I conduct. So we were commended by the pharmacist who did the review that everything had been caught. The only one that we did not catch was transposed numbers on a date. So we have done very well with our medication accountability. And of the 11 items that were for recommendation, we were able to get those all implemented within a 60-day process of the time that they were recommended. The only thing that is left to be recommended is on the, it'll be, I believe, coming up for capital expenditure approval sometime within the next few weeks to update the locks and the internet system that we use for controlling those locks on our ambulance drug cabinets. So not a lot of details that I can show as far as some graphics or anything to display, but we were very pleased with the fact that with a very detailed examination, we found very, very few errors and that all 11 of the recommendations that were made were recommendations for improvement. None of them were actually deficiencies that did not meet the DEA or Iowa Board of Pharmacy or the Bureau of Emergency and Trauma Services recommendations. So with that, I'll open up to anybody who has any questions or would like any clarifications.
Thanks, Chief. I'll start with a quick one. So then are you doing this annually, I take it, or is it?
I believe we're doing it every two to three years. We don't actually have that written into the policy. It was a periodic check was the only thing that we wrote into our policy. And the pharmacist who did it recommended about a three-year recommendation is what I remember. And I know Chief Rowe was involved in that process as well.
Thank you, Chief. Other questions, council? Well, seeing none, thank you, Chief, for this presentation and for this update. It looks like great progress.
Great. I think so as well. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Okay, very good. Well, at this time, then, we'll move to action items. The first item is a resolution approving the contract and general conditions with DCI Group Incorporated for Construction Management Services, Clive Public Safety Facility in the amount of $868,375. And Matt, you're going to lead this discussion?
Yep, I will start it off. Thank you, Your Honor. Tonight, we have before you another step in the process of bringing the new public safety facility to life. Over the last couple of months, the city went through an RFP process with our owner's representative, Angie Fonku, from Christians Development, leading that effort to select a construction manager as agent to lead this project for the city of Clive. One thing I'll note real quickly before turning it over to Angie is we weren't able to get the general conditions worked out. So I didn't get that. I forgot to edit that in the agenda item title. The resolution has been amended to show that this is just approving the contract tonight. And then when we come back with the prime contracts, likely in September, we'll approve the general conditions at that time. So without further ado, wanted to turn it over to Angie to talk a little bit about how we went through this process and then how it came about the recommendation that is before you this evening and also give DCI Group folks who are also in attendance a chance to talk about their work. With that, I'll turn it over to Angie.
Good evening, Angie. If you wouldn't mind, just to state your name and address for the record.
Okay, can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, 215, sorry, Angie Fonku, 215 East Third Street, Suite 300, Des Moines, 50309. So as you guys have been coming along this process here, we have taken the route of hiring a construction manager, a CMA. And we interviewed three firms. We got proposals. We sent out proposals to seven. Six responded. We interviewed three firms and we have chosen DCI based on their work that they've done for the state of Iowa and Warren County basically is why we chose them with their public safety experience. But then also they did a corporate renovation as a CM for principal. So we believe they have the office experience as well that we will need for our meeting spaces and for the general open office areas. So you guys have seen our budget on this. And just as a reminder, when we did the Stecker Harmsen budget to get to our 13.5, there was fee in there to have a GC or to go out to traditional low bid type situation. So that fee was covered in there. So this is not additional. This is wrapped up in what you guys have already seen in the past. It's just a little bit different method that we have chosen. We think anytime you can bring someone onto the team ahead of just sending out the bid packages, you end up in a good spot. So I would recommend approval for this. And DCI is on as well, if you guys would like them to say a word or two, or if you have any questions for me first.
Mayor, I think you muted yourself, sir.
Yeah, council, if you have any questions for Angie, and then we can certainly bring DCI on if needed.
Yeah, I'll start, Mayor, but that's okay. So Angie, looking at the bids, you know, Story and Turner were not brought in for interviews. Is that because they didn't have proposed packages as part of that? And then also, if you could just, just as a follow-up question, you know, DCI was the highest bid of the three that were interviewed, I believe. And, you know, looking at their response, it was certainly impressive to me. But could you just explain, maybe provide a little more context as to why you chose them even though there were lower bids?
Yeah, I will. Let me address the Turner and Story first. So we did not bring everybody in for interviews. We made sure we brought in the low and interviewed them and then brought in the others that we thought were qualified. Turner was higher than others. We didn't bring in Ryan Companies either. So we didn't interview everyone. We looked at their proposals. I did a matrix. And then we brought in those that we thought we were most interested in that would fit what we were looking for. A lot of them was the number of bid packages, too. We did take that into consideration. And DCI was the highest out of the three, but they have capped their fee. So even if our construction goes up, they have capped that at that 868,000. Let me pull that number up here, at the 868,375. So we know that is the most we will be paying DCI. So the others, that is not the case. Their fee would have changed based on some decisions we are continuing to make.
So that's fair. Can you speak to their qualifications over the other two that were lower, though?
Yeah, so DCI, and I may turn this over to Kevin to give more of a background, but they have been working for DAS at the state for years and they have raving reviews and recommendations from Charlie at the state. And then they also have that office component. And they are true CMAs where McGoff is not a true CMA. That's something they're exploring now in Iowa since the CMR bill did not pass. So DCI was better qualified than Kester. They had less bid packages than Kester. And then them and McGoff were close, but DCI is a true CMA that works through this process all the time and we felt most comfortable with them.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Angie, this is Eric. Quick question for you. DCI is also working on the Warren County facility, which is substantial, $35 million project. Are they comfortable with the scope of handling both these projects simultaneously? And how comfortable are you?
Yes, this team that is working for us is a totally different team than what is working for Warren County, minus maybe some of the same people that did some of the pre-construction and helped with budgeting. But the actual project manager, the superintendent, everyone like that is different than what's going on at Warren County. Our team has just come off a project and so they are ready and able to go. So I am 100% comfortable with them.
Thank you.
Other questions, council, for Angie?
Move the resolution.
Second. Moved by John, seconded by Michael. Further discussion? Hearing none of the council, please vote. And passes five to zero. Thank you, Angie. And Matt?
Your Honor, if I could real quickly, just to give the council a preview, now that we have a construction manager on board, you'll see some other steps coming very quickly. We'll have the setting the public hearings for the actual construction bid of the prime contractors at the next council meeting. And then those will go out to bid. I believe 11 packages is kind of what we're looking at at this point. And then that will be out in bid in September and come back to the council at your second meeting in September, depending on the bids that we receive for recommendation of the different prime contractors. And DCI will lead that effort along with Angie to bring that back to you. And we're really excited to get them on board. And it's a really good time to be bidding this project. And Angie, I don't know if you want to kind of speak to that a little bit, but just wanted to kind of give you a preview of the next steps that are coming.
Good, Angie, go ahead.
Um, yeah, so DCI and I and SVPA and our teams have been working to evaluate the drawings to date and make sure there's nothing that's missing coordination item-wise. So DCI is already working on front-end scopes and putting bid packages together. And so we will be sending out for bid. And like Matt said, that last meeting of September, we will be bringing forward to you guys all of our recommendations for prime contractors so that we can get going in October and still get our fall start here. And it is a great time for bidding. So we're excited to get out and get these out and see what kind of pricing we get back.
And to that end, we are tentatively looking at some type of groundbreaking, likely in early October, for this facility and will be working on some details related to that. So more to come on a lot of items related to this facility. Exciting time to be moving this project forward after a number of years of planning.
Just out of curiosity, why is it a great time for bidding?
Um, I will tell you, because we're ready to start. So a lot of projects that people are working on right now, they're not going to be ready to start until spring and we're going to be ready to start right away. So this project has not been out on the streets for a lot of pre-bidding work and a lot of estimating. So contractors are excited about it. And with this being, you know, a total project cost of under 20 million, way under 20 million, it's a quick project for people. It'll be a year-long project for GCs or for primes. So they're looking for that type of work to fill in right now. A lot of private development projects that were supposed to start this fall have stalled due to financing. So this is a perfect time to, you know, like throw in a couple million dollar package for an MEP contractor or a steel and precast contractor. So they have space right now and they have availability. So we're coming in at a good time.
Matt, don't want to let the cat out of the bag too early here, but something that we're considering with the city of Urbandale is a joint effort of some kind with our groundbreaking with the new Station 43 as well. So perhaps an event at our facility and then a subsequent event that same afternoon at their facility, just to really tell the story of the interconnectedness and the collaboration between our communities and to give us an opportunity to really tell that story, which is so important, I think, to all of our residents and the residents of Urbandale and those that receive our services. So that's what we're working on. It's not completed yet, but stand by on that. Matt, anything else?
No, yes, Your Honor, exactly. With the Station 43 in Urbandale opening up kind of at the beginning of the pandemic, we really weren't able to do a formal kind of grand opening for the council. We did kind of a virtual tour that we shared with you. And so as we were talking with the city of Urbandale, knowing that we use the closest unit response for fire and EMS coverage and that our new station and facility will also respond into Urbandale, we thought this would be a good time to kind of cycle back on Station 43 and then also the new facility and just kind of give us even more opportunity to speak to that partnership that we have between the two communities.
Any other questions, council, on this one? All right, seeing none, we're going to move on to action item number two, which is a site plan at 2200 Northwest 152nd Street. And Jill, I believe you have this one.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, council. And I'm going to share my screen here.
One moment, Jill, I have to change the security setting. There you go.
All right. Okay, so I just wanted to pull this up so everyone can kind of look at the site here. So if you're unfamiliar at all, 2200 Northwest 152nd is right here, just south of Kinder Care, next to Nebraska Furniture Mart. That's close to 152nd Street, its main corridor. So what they're looking to do is construct a little over 10,000-square-foot mixed-use office building on a little over two-acre lot. They're looking to incorporate retail office and then they also have the ability to use 3,200 square feet for a coffee, donut, or deli type of use. They have the parking for that. And it's going to be made up of six available suites. The building itself is made of brick ephes and hardy board and a variety of white, brown, and bronze accents and tones. And I do have the elevations as well. Each storefront is made up of double doors with lots of windows on each side for visibility into those suites as well. I got the site layout here. So it shares the existing entrance that is already off of 152nd Street, just south of Kinder Care. So customers will come into the site using that existing driveline and then can circulate either direction throughout the site. It is made for two-way traffic throughout. It has 57 parking spots, which do allow for that extra deli, coffee, or donut shop type of use. It will not be able to accommodate a drive-through, though, so we don't expect for it to be a very impactful use like a Starbucks or something like that. It would be something much smaller. There's also a sidewalk connection that will be made to the existing Kinder Care site. So there will be some connectivity there. They will be required to finish the sidewalk along 152nd Street currently. Kinder Care had finished theirs and then to the south where the residential starts, the sidewalk is there. So this is the only gap in that section that gets up to Hickman. So that will be required to be completed before the CO is issued. There's also a pretty substantial landscape buffer that is required along the south side since they are a commercial property and there is residential to the south. They're required to have this 50-foot landscape buffer along this entire south side with an earthen berm as well. So there's going to be some grading through here. This landscape buffer has about 140 trees in it. So it should be a pretty good barrier between the residential and the start of these commercial properties. There's also an additional 35 trees that are required throughout the site, which they have been able to accommodate on this two-acre site. For stormwater detention, there are two basins along the east side here. There's one that's kind of long that runs part of the length of the landscape buffer and then another one over here on kind of the northeast corner of the site. So the stormwater should flow into one of those two bio-retention cells. There's a scour stop and turf reinforcement matting that are used to prevent erosion in those areas as well. And some soil management practices are also going to be followed during construction to keep those areas. There is an existing fire hydrant near Christian Brothers in the northwest, right off the site, but on the Christian Brothers site in that area. That covers a fairly substantial amount of the building. And then they are adding a second fire hydrant here in the southeast corner of the building that will take care of that need. They're connecting to existing water and sanitary sewer easements that already run through the site. And we did have one public comment that was in opposition to the project just because they thought it could be a better use as a park or something like that. You guys have those comments in your packet. So I just put a addressing that. I just have that that commercial property was incorporated into the city along with dolls at the time and the Kinder Care and Christian Brothers sites. And they were zoned as that when they came into the city. So it's always been slated for commercial. One last thing, just on traffic for the site. 152nd Street is unsignaled at this time. I did look into the DOT's plan for Hickman in this corridor in this area. They do have it to potentially be a signaled stop at a time if the area ends up warranting that. So that could be something in the future. So as the city, we can just keep an eye on that intersection. And if the traffic volumes continue to increase and prove problematic, that could be a signaled site in the future or possibly expanded. But at this time, the city doesn't see this, you know, relatively small building adding a lot of traffic to the area. Any questions so far?
Thanks, Jill. Questions, council?
Jill, this is Eric. Thanks you answered my question that we spoke of earlier on the sidewalk. Any concern with the grading and the landscaping plan that adjusts the residential neighborhoods? I know there's, we talked a bit, there's a lot of scrub and things of that nature. Can you confirm that stuff will be removed with this landscaping plan?
Right, yeah. Anything that's currently there will be removed since there is quite a bit of grading along this entire south border to make that earthen berm. I believe this one tree that's in kind of grayscale is the only tree that will remain on site that's currently there.
That is one lucky tree. I do have a question, Mayor. I just, on that berm side, I'm a little surprised that there isn't connectivity from the east coming through that, right? I mean, if you're talking walkability and residential engaging like we've talked about, now you're still walking up to Hickman to come back around and then come down? Is that what you're saying? Or up to that entrance and then come back down where you could just? You're talking coffee, donut shop.
Right, so.
No entrance or walkability into the property from the east-southeast?
Yeah, they would need to use the sidewalk connection that would be on the Kinder Care side.
Does it make sense? And this is, I think it's a pretty good point, actually. Does it make sense? And this is a, I think it's a pretty good point, actually. Would it make sense to have some sort of pedestrian access, potentially a little walk maybe down at the southeast corner of, of the site?
I think because of the, the need for the berm through here that's required and then the landscape buffer that's required, it could be difficult to fit something that would be pedestrian-friendly through this area somewhere. Also, just because the, the way. Right.
I understand that we're trying to screen the residents to the south and to the east somewhat, and that's understandable. But, you know, if we want the facility to be used and engaged by the public, then I think that's a reasonable question. I don't know that it necessarily stops the approval of the, of the site plan necessarily, but I think it's a pretty good question to ponder with the, with the developer.
Right, yes, it's an excellent question. They may have a little more detail than I do. I, I'm not sure if someone is on the call tonight from CDA.
Person from CDA is on the phone or on the call. If you'd please use your hand raising function.
And if you just state your name and address for the record would be appreciated.
One moment, Mayor, I'm going to check a couple of phone numbers here too as well.
Like you said, Mayor, it's not a game changer for me, right? I just, it was a question.
Absolutely, and we can continue to look into that, too.
Okay, one moment, please. Caller. Ah, yes, we have Travis. One moment, please.
And also Jared Murray with CDA. He's there as well.
Travis, this is Pete. And Jared Murray, one moment, please. Okay, Travis and Jared, you should both be able to unmute yourself.
Good evening, gentlemen. If you'd both state your name and address for the record, please.
Okay, it looked like it worked. This is Jared Murray with Still Design Advantage, thirty-four oh five Southeast Crossroads Drive, Suite G in Grimes. I guess, I don't think we're, Travis, maybe you have an opinion, but I don't think we're opposed to it, I guess, but I don't think it was ever brought up during any review process or anything, so it wasn't necessarily considered during that design aspect. I think our, our only consideration, I guess, is that entrance is up, that, that north entrance, kind of keep everyone in that entrance and then utilize some of that existing sidewalk that's already within the development.
And Travis, are you, are you on? If you would like to make comments, you just state your name and, and address for the record really quickly and then we can
This is Travis. This is seventy-three hundred West Town Parkway, Suite three-ten, West Des Moines, Iowa, five oh two six six. Same with what Jared said. I think, I think the bigger issue with this is actually the grading and being able to put a sidewalk in there that would actually meet code because of the birmingham that's required along with all the landscaping. I mean, we'd be glad to give up a bunch of trees for a sidewalk, but I don't think the city would like that.
Yeah. Well, something to consider, if you're going to dunk in donuts in there, you know, council member client for one is probably going to want to go over there all the time.
I, I, I think the coffee shop's more of a neighborhood-type coffee shop is what we're thinking, to kind of service not only the neighborhood, but to also service Kinder Care and the drop-offs in the morning.
Well, we don't need to, unless the council prefers, we don't need to hold up on this one item. I do think it's worth a consideration, and I've got to think there should, there could be some creative thinking around what occurs here. So I, I'll stop that there unless, Michael, you have other questions on that point.
No, that's all. Thank you.
I'd move approval of the site plan.
Moved by John, seconded by Michael. Further discussion? Seeing now, will the council please vote? That item passes five to zero. Thank you, Jill and all.
Thank you.
Okay, action item number three is a site plan amendment at thirteen ninety Northwest one hundred and eighteen Street. Laquita, Amanda, you're going to lead us on this one.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Sorry, I still had myself muted. Can you all see my screen? I have a Google image pulled up. So this is a refresher for you of what Laquita looks like today. So you can see it's the yellow two-tone color. So what we have before us tonight is a site plan amendment that primarily just updates the facade of that building. So you can see that the vertical columns are going away as well as the horizontal detailing. From the image here, those almost look like balconies. They are not. They're just some decorative parts on the building to give it some dimension. So those items will be going away. So you'll have a smoother surface. There's a bit of a parapet added here to kind of differentiate that main entrance portion of the building as well as some accent material added to kind of call out that main entrance as well. The colors are a gray scheme aside from the accent material. So that's really the elevations that are proposed. We also have some updates to the landscaping through working with staff. The applicant was able to save quite a few of the trees on site. There are thirteen that will be removed. Some of those are ash trees that are dead or dying. A few other unhealthy trees. And then there are quite a few that are just too close to the building. They really shouldn't have been planted there in the first place. And then they would also prohibit the work being proposed on those exterior renovations. So those are being removed, but the perennial landscaping around the building is being maintained and filled in as needed through that work. Also, there are some of the existing light poles, the light kits are no longer functional. So the applicant is also going to update those to an LED light at the same time. No changes to the poles. But it is a fairly standard light, the downcast that we see on a lot of our properties when they do those upgrades. Mr. Amin is the new owner of the property. He closed on that in July. He's making investments to improve on it. There's also an interior remodel that's under review with our building department right now. That won't come before you guys, just to let you know, though, there are some other changes that are going to be taking place over there. So with that, staff doesn't have any remaining comments to work out with the applicant. P and Z recommended approval at their meeting and Mr. Amin is on tonight if you do have any questions, but we would recommend approval.
Thanks, Amin. And questions, counsel?
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved by Eric, seconded by John. From a discussion standpoint, Amanda, I just want to make sure I understood you correctly. Is it a one-for-one tree replacement?
So for the original site plan that I believe was in the nineties, without checking, it is a one-for-one of what they would have had at that time. They will actually have more trees after this than are still alive on site today. You've just had some trees die in the last twenty or thirty years. So it will be more trees than you see today, but consistent with the original plans that were approved.
Very good. Any other discussion? Seeing now, will the council please vote? Item passes five to zero. Thank you, Amanda and all. Okay, action item number four is to approve pay request number nine for RDG Planning and Design of the West Gate Parkway Bridge, five hundred dollars and fifty cents.
Move approval. Second.
Approved by John, seconded by Michael. Further discussion?
I'll be abstaining.
Oh, thank you, Susan. Any other discussion? Seeing now, will the council please vote? Item passes with four in favor and one abstention. Thank you. Okay, we'll move to discussion items now. Regarding general regulations, ordinance revision. Jill, you're going to lead that one for us?
Yep. I'm going to share my screen again. I got a fairly short PowerPoint here. There we go. All right, so what I included in your packet was a couple follow-up sheets from the last two groups that we were able to discuss last time. So those have been through P and Z and council now, so I think staff has pretty good direction there as to what to do with that kind of half of the general regulations that we've already discussed. Minus one topic that I will have at the end. But I will move on. So I got two groups for you tonight, and that will take care of the rest of these initial discussions with general regulations. So the hope after this is that we have good direction and the next time we present something, it will be code language that we can continue to discuss at a later date. So this first one begins with accessory buildings. I changed my slides a little bit from last time, if you recall, in the hopes that we don't have to go over kind of the whole code section that we're discussing. So what I've done is just put in kind of a summary of what was discussed at Planning and Zoning Commission and the proposed changes either from staff or P and Z that we've kind of come to, come to a decision about. So I'm hoping, hoping to steer the conversation just around those, but if you have any other, you know, topics or concerns as I'm moving through these, please feel free to speak up. I'm going to try to stop pretty often and just ask for your opinion on things. Or if anyone has any feelings, you know, one way or the other, just so we have some clear direction on where to move forward.
Is that a chicken house at Weaver's backyard?
No, that, that's, that's just a shed.
Oh, I thought that was. We change the ordinance then, or the zoning regulation, then I'll get it. Weaver's Chicken Coop.
All right, so accessory buildings. This, most of these changes are actually proposed by Ryan, our, our building inspector to make his life a lot easier and make, make things simpler in the code. So we're looking to change the definition to really refer to garages only. Things like sheds and gazebos that don't store vehicles would be moved to accessory structures and have some criteria under there, but not in accessory buildings, just so those regulations are clearly for garages and that's, that's spelled out in the code. Also, considering changing the minimum building separation to five feet instead of ten. That's also from Ryan. It just goes along with other building codes closer than what, than what we have. And he's just fine with that. Also, if, if there's a lot-toe agreement between two lots, that someone is able to build a garage on that separate lot if they would like. A small item that roof eaves are not included in setbacks. And then considering allowing these buildings and side yards for multifamily and commercial buildings, since a lot of times those are they could have an odd-shaped lot where really a side yard is more appropriate. Right now, they'd have to go to Board of Adjustment for that because it would only be allowed in a rear yard. And then changing the maximum height of garages to fifteen feet. Currently, the code reads that it's a twelve-foot maximum, but it's the midpoint of the roof. That's pretty confusing for people. So if we just say a fifteen-foot maximum, that's from finished floor grade to the top of the peak, that's really easy for folks to understand and able to calculate. So those are the proposed changes for accessory buildings. Any concerns with those? All right, hearing none. The next one covers accessory structures. This goes over quite a few things like pergolas. And then if we put sheds and things like that in there, we'll, we'll cover those as well. Right now, it has decks, pools, there's animal runs, there's garbage enclosures, there's, there's kind of a lot of stuff that's just thrown in here. So I have a few of just general items at the top that this section covers, just so you can see those quickly if you need to refer refer to that. One of the big changes we, we discussed with P and Z was considering allowing decks inside a building envelope. Not necessarily just fifty square feet or less in front yards and side yards, and then more than fifty square feet are in rear yards only. For quite a few folks, especially if they're on a corner lot or maybe a cul-de-sac, a, a side yard would be an appropriate spot to put of possibly a larger than fifty-foot deck. When we discussed it, Plan Commission was, was only comfortable with allowing larger than a fifty-foot deck in a side yard, but still keep them under fifty square feet in a front yard. And I did make some examples of those next, so I'll go into a little bit more detail with that. We're also looking into adding pool deck requirements here. If you are constructing a pool, you have to look in the building code section for pools there, so we at least want to make a reference for it. So if people are researching it, they can easily find that there are some decking requirements around a pool as well. We also discussed a, the twenty-foot setback that's currently in place for fences in secondary front yards. Just if there was any interest in, in moving that at all. They opted to keep, keep the twenty-foot setback that that's been good for the city as of, since it was changed. Also looking at changing commercial animal runs to rear yards only. Right now, they're also permitted in side yards, which for a kind of invasive use, that's not necessarily the best place for those. We also discussed materials for dumpster enclosures, and they were okay with composite materials or newer, newer materials that what's currently in the code isn't necessarily modern materials any longer, so that they're okay with that being updated. And then consider additional criteria for personal recreation structures, which I also have a slide on that as well. Does anyone have any concerns with some of those items right now?
Questions or comments, counsel? That looks good, Jill.
All right, so just some quick examples here of what I was talking about with, with decks, just so you understand that. Amanda made these for me, our GIS Pro. I just picked out some lots that could be some decent examples of where you'd possibly want a larger deck. So right now, you can build, you can pour a patio just about anywhere you want, as long as you're not covering thirty percent of the yard and you're two, you have a two-foot setback off a property line. You could also build a home addition up to your, where, where we have these dashes, that's your building envelope, that's the setbacks. So you could build a building addition, but you just couldn't have more than a fifty-square-foot deck in a side yard or, or a front yard. So we've just run in, staff have seen some issues with that and a handful of people, you know, wanting those or they've gone to Board of Adjustment for it. It's honestly not a ton, but if people are reading that in the code or they know they can't do it, you know, they're not going to ask either. So in this example, they, this, this home has quite a bit of a, a room in a side yard here. There's also quite a bit of room in the front for a deck, and it could be an appropriate location. Here's a cul-de-sac lot, kind of the same thing. They have very large side yard that could be appropriate for a deck. This is kind of a regular lot as well. They have the front entrance on this side. This would be, I'd call it the east side, because it's face that way. So they could possibly want something here in a side yard or a lot of these if they, especially if they had a grade in the back where they had an existing, an existing deck and maybe they wanted a connection to the front of the house. That's going to end up being more than square, fifty square feet, just to put a walkway from the front to the back of the home. So we, we've had a Board of Adjustment case for that. Also, just to put a walkway, it was for, for a wheelchair ramp, but they had to go to Board of Adjustment for it just to put that deck from the front to the rear of the house. So those are some examples with that. Anyone have any concerns with changing that code section potentially to allow more than fifty square feet of decking in a side yard? And like I said, Plan Commission wasn't comfortable with also allowing that in the front, just to keep that regulation at less than fifty square feet for front yard decks.
Looks like everybody's okay, Jill.
All right. Alright.
I just make a point that as much as people are using the outside parts of their yards these days, I could see a lot of interest in this. So I think it's a great idea.
Wonderful. Okay, the next section we were looking into, I kind of just dubbed this personal amusement structures. But it covers anything that would be like a basketball court, maybe a skateboard, horse, maybe a zip line. Sport courts of various types could be covered under this, so right now we don't have anything for it. It would just be yard coverage if you're pouring concrete. But some of these things can be kind of invasive and we don't have anything for it. In my knowledge, I don't think that staff has had a lot of enforcement issues with them. But it could hold off on some of that if council was interested in implementing something like this. I did keep all the possible inclusions that we talked about with Planning and Zoning Commission on here, so you could kind of see what we discussed. So something, you know, like this would be in a rear yard only, obviously fully contained on your private property. Maximum height of 12 feet for a structure, so if your zip line is very tall, you need to reduce it down. Except for like a basketball hoop or something, that could be, you know, taller than 12 feet. Any structures that are attached to the ground would apply to yard coverage. Lighting would need to be contained and not splay over the property lines. And then have something in there for no noise, odors, light, pollution, etc. And at least with a five-foot setback instead of a two-foot setback for poured concrete, just so it has a little bit more of a separation. We did also discuss these items possibly needing a fence around it. One of the Plan Commission members actually said he has a fence around his yard or his neighbor does. And the neighbor kid constantly just has to ask permission to come into his yard all the time, to come, you know, get the ball or frisbee or whatever that's in there. So he'd rather not have the fence there. So it was kind of an interesting take on that, but we had this discussion, so I'd like your input on what you think about potentially adding something like this. Like I said, I'm not sure that there's huge demand, but we will definitely see it when there is a problem. If someone puts, you know, spotlights over their batting cage, so. Thoughts on that?
I don't think fencing's required. Certainly the lighting, I can see that as a potential issue, but I mean, I've got a neighbor just down the street from me who's got a a nice basketball court in his backyard, it's not fenced and it's really not needed.
Sure.
Yeah, I agree, I don't know that a fence would be needed necessarily.
So just the fence portion of it or this type of regulation at all?
Yeah, it's a good question, I mean, are we trying to solve a problem that's not there?
That would be my question, Ted.
I don't know that it's an issue, so do we really need it? I don't know. I'd be fine without it, let's put it that way.
Okay.
Anybody else?
I'm just thinking 12 feet sounds really tall to me.
That's what we currently have for accessory structures, so that's why we went with 12.
Jill, would that include outdoor playgrounds, your standard wood rainbow type playgrounds as well?
No, I wouldn't feel comfortable, you know, kind of restricting general play that much. These types of things would be for your more invasive types of things like, yeah, if someone wanted to put in a zip line, a dirt bike track, but sport courts also, you know, with the constant bouncing of a ball off of a hard surface, off of a backboard, off of rackets, things like that. The city's just seeing more of them, so it was kind of a point to, if now that we're updating general regulations, if and when this is a good time to incorporate something like this now would be an easy time to do it, since we are seeing more of these types of structures.
I think it's better to have something now than deal with the problem later down the line when it comes across our desk.
Sure.
Well, I wanted to return to the height of the fence, because that's something that was dealt with in the country club owners association. As more members were looking to put in pools, and of course fencing is required around pools. But there was a lot of interest in making sure that we weren't blocking off views for homes. So the 12 feet, sounds like that could be blocking off an awful lot of visibility from a neighbor.
No, I mean 12 feet for a component that would have to do with the structure, let's say like the platform to a zip line or some future sport item that I'm not considering. If we did require fences, it would be a maximum six foot.
Okay, good, sorry, I was confusing those two things, thank you.
Nope, that's just fine.
Well, council, my guidance for Jill on this one, you know, on one hand, we can live without it. To John's point, it's probably better to have something now while we're doing it than try to do it later. So I guess what's the desire of the council?
I don't know, from my perspective, you know, if somebody wants to put a basketball hoop up in their backyard, I don't know, I'm just not sure that we need to mandate they have a fence up, a six-foot fence around that, but that's just my thought.
Yeah, I think we were saying that we should not require fences earlier in Ted's and my discussion, I think.
Correct.
Yeah.
I'd agree with Ted as well, right, that's different than a pool. A pool, someone, you know, can fall into, the liability of a basketball court is on the owner. Two different things, so I'm good with no fences.
What about a zip line?
A zip line from my yard down to 90th would be super cool. Might try that, we're all the way down to Swanson.
I think what's beyond just the fencing, it's, do we need this regulation at all? I think John's saying that, you know, better to be preemptive. And I get that, I mean, my thought is, I still feel like we're trying to solve a problem that's not there. I don't know how many people are putting in dirt bike tracks and skateboard courses and zip lines in their backyard. So I don't know, I personally don't think it's necessary, but that's just me.
Yeah, I agree with that.
I do agree with that until John brings up, until we have a swim pool issue. And we have, you know, and then it's too late to react. So I'm on the fence, I'm on the fence there, right?
I think we have swim pools covered already, you know. I don't know that we would be overly excited if someone put a dirt track in their backyard necessarily without without covering, but those are individual situations that are addressed on an individual basis, based on the circumstances of the time. And I'm almost more comfortable dealing with it that way, to Ted's point, you know. Because it's almost impossible to get your arms around all the various scenarios that could play out in something like this. So.
Your honor, this is Matt, could I chime in on just a question? Jill, would you say the regulations that would apply in this instance that are currently in our code, are they? Because as you mentioned, there wasn't a specific section that applied to these types of structures. So what part of our code does apply and is that current application more restrictive for these types of applications than what we have, what the possible inclusions are here?
Right, what we currently have would just be the 30% yard coverage. So if you put in a full basketball court or tennis court or maybe a, you know, a skateboard half pipe, you couldn't cover more than 30% of that yard area. And then if, you know, your skateboard half pipe can't be taller than 12 feet. Because I think that would be an accessory structure, but we wouldn't have anything else. So for instance, you know, if they put up lights, light splaying, we only have for commercial properties, not for residential. So that could be a thing that could maybe, you know, go along with these more invasive uses versus if, you know, someone's back patio light happens to splay over a property line a little bit, that's not as big of a deal. But if someone's trying to light up their basketball court, that could be. Having a slightly larger setback could help or even more so than that. Having a fence could or could not help, depending on that. Those are just the kind of things that we've been looking into and kind of grappling with. Since the little over the year I've been here, we did get a call for a zip line. My other thoughts were skateboard half pipes or dirt bikes. And I found in some of my research on how other planners dealt with this, which is kind of all over the board. But yeah, there's not a lot, so those two things of just the yard coverage and then accessory structure height is really all we currently would have to regulate these in any sort of way.
Thank you, and that was the reason I asked the question, your honor, is just to give the council a flavor of, is this more more regulation versus less that we have today, and I just wanted to make sure you kind of, that we kind of laid that all out.
Yeah, I understand. So we, you know, we kind of have split direction on this piece. It sounds like to me, anyway, based on the comments, so.
It's Susan Wayne.
No, I am interested in keeping it as open and flexible as possible.
Okay.
I would agree with that, I mean, Matt brings up a good point. And a different perspective on that that I hadn't thought about. You know, so maybe if there's a way to make it more flexible than it is today. But having some legitimate regulations in there, like with respect to the lighting, I can see that as definitely being an issue. You know, I would definitely support that.
Okay, I can look into some of those more just individual items versus the things that go along with sport courts and these other type of uses versus just doing it individually versus kind of all together. That's reasonable.
Yeah, I think we want to avoid what you described as these invasive things that everybody in the neighborhood would be upset about.
Right, right.
Okay, perfect.
What's next, Jill?
Moving along, we talked about accessory dwelling units. I kept a little bit more up on the slides, so you can kind of see what we discussed. Just different types, they can either be in-home, connected to a home, or detached completely. So there's quite a few different options with accessory dwelling units. Ultimately, we talked about a number of different types of things, such as where they would go, what kind of building codes would apply. If we would allow just interior only, or if someone could build an exterior structure. But ultimately, P and Z decided that they weren't really interested in pursuing this at this time. Didn't think Clive really had a huge need for accessory dwelling unit type of housing. So that's where we ended up with it, if you have any differing opinions on that, we can discuss.
So you could allow it right now, or you are just gonna skip the whole subject?
No, not move forward in adding accessory dwelling units to the code.
And we don't have them now, just to be clear, right?
Correct, we do not have them now.
Jill, are you seeing much of a demand for accessory dwelling units?
I personally have not, I think Doug's on, if he would happen to know, if he's heard too much in the grapevine over accessory dwelling units.
One moment, your honor. Doug, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Thanks, you know, not a lot of pressing interest, frankly, because it's generally prohibited in our community as well as other communities within the metro area. But as there's continuing discussion about housing affordability and just housing in general. Accessory dwelling units provide an opportunity to add units, add dwellings. And also provide the property owner more flexibility to more fully utilize their property potentially. Whether or not that's through having a small space within the existing structure or the construction of a of a small detached space. I don't think it's going to be a highly used tool. But I do see that there is the potential for the application, primarily on the east side of town where you have larger lots that are oversized for single-family, for a single-family house. But are not necessarily big enough to subdivide properly for two full single-family houses. So generally speaking, we think that there may be an opportunity to look at that on the east side of town. Honestly, if we don't address it with the zoning ordinance, that I don't think is going to move the needle a whole lot. But I do think it is a topic that will get some further discussion as we get into District One. And potentially, if it's a viable component in that planning process, we may come back with a specific recommendation to utilize that tool in a specific geography of the city.
Yeah, what I was gonna say on this is, I don't, for me, I'm not ready to agree to this. I just don't know enough about it, it seems like there could be some unintended consequences that come with it. But I would be open to it in the future, I would like us to maybe include this in our whole redevelopment study of that District One area. And have that as, you know, maybe part of the recommendations and what we could expect from something like that. But I think to me, it's premature to look at that right now.
I would agree with Ted on that, I think that's good guidance.
Unfortunately, I agree.
Wayne should be.
Ted's making note of that as we speak.
For the record, I concur.
Alright, we will see what comes with District One then and potentially bring back some more discussion with accessory dwelling units.
You're welcome, Weaver, the professor only agreed because I did first.
Jill, what else do you have?
Alright, the other new topic we had discussed were short-term lodging, kind of the same. Planning and zoning, didn't feel that, kind of felt that it was unjustified at this time, because there really isn't a big use of this in Clive. Pre-COVID days, when I was researching this, I'd get about three on average at any given time in Clive. They really didn't look like party houses, there was definitely one of those in West Des Moines, I think it came with a boat to use. But the ones in Clive, this is an example. You know, it could be a basement suite, an extra bedroom, maybe the full use of a house. But there generally wasn't very many in the city, so they weren't really comfortable in pursuing this just because it's not an overly addressed. It's not utilized in the city very much right now, so potentially as possibly, if it starts getting utilized more, which is kind of hard to see right now with COVID. But if people start doing Airbnbs much more and we start to get a lot in Clive and maybe some complaints with those, we could bring something back to you, but like I said, there was kind of three to five at any given moment in the city of Clive, but it was a pretty low number. So we're looking to keep no regulations on things like Airbnbs.
The assessment from the city of Des Moines is that legislative changes in this last session have virtually made it impossible to regulate this. So their proposal is dead in the water. So their, their proposal is dead in the water now.
Really? I didn't know that. Wow.
Yep. Their legal will finish up the report in the next week or so, but they're, they're not gonna be able to do anything, it doesn't look like.
In terms of just regulating the. The, oh, John, and.
Yeah, the short-term, yeah, short-term lodging issue, they're. Uh, very limited now, apparently, what they can do.
And I think the city of Des Moines was a little bit overly restrictive, in my opinion. Um, and, and so that may be part of it. Um, I, I think if you, if you lessen the amount of regulations. Around it, then it, it may be more feasible. I, I don't know, I don't know the specifics, but I do know that in my opinion, the city of Des Moines was a little bit too restrictive.
Well, I think hopefully we can look back to this. One of the concerns I have is health safety. That if these are unregulated, you know, uh, I mean, I think we all saw the story a while back of a vacation family. That was killed by carbon uh, monoxide, so. Uh, it's something to look back on to see what we can do, but right now, I'm not sure we can do anything.
All right, so we are halfway, but I think this one will go pretty quick. The kind of rest of some of these groups that uh, we didn't really propose any changes for. Probably no talking points then. Um, I just put together on, on one slide, so we have sale of alcoholic beverages through a drive-through. Um, pretty much can't do it. I guess right now, this could be a good talking point if you'd like to. Um, you know, get some margaritas through a drive-through during COVID times. Um, could be something, but also adult-oriented businesses, pawnbrokers, and then uh, automobile sales as well. We weren't looking to make any changes to.
You're comfortable with a, with a level of regulation now, Jill, just to be sure?
Correct. Um, so the next one is outdoor areas and activities. Um, so we discussed this with Plan Commission uh, for items like. Lawnmowers that may be outside for sale, firewood, convenience items. Or things like, you know, rental trucks, is that a storage item or is that a for-sale item? Um, so that can get a little bit hairy for staff, you know, if, if U-Haul wants to open up a, a storefront. Do we want to see those vehicles? Cause if they are outdoor storage, then they should be screened. But if they're just for sale like a lawnmower, um, they don't need to be. So we, we had those discussions and Plan Commission was, was comfortable with outdoor sales. They said, you know, if you. Drive through the city and see lawnmowers or snow blowers outside for sale, that, that doesn't bother um, anyone or the aesthetic of the city. Uh, same with things like firewood or other convenience items that could be located outside. Um, I will have outdoor vending here soon, so if you're thinking of things like propane tanks or Netflix boxes, that's a different type of thing. So this is just with, with things that have to do with outdoor sales and storage. The other item with this is uh, service areas, which are just patios, outdoor patios. Um, the only thing uh, that came, came up during Plan Commission was to just make a reference to the no- noise ordinance. So they um, are aware that there is a noise ordinance and they would have to abide by that for an outdoor patio. So if everyone was comfortable with items like lawnmowers, firewood, other types of things being outside for sale, that that's still okay?
Yeah, I don't know that we have any issues now. There's so much with these areas unless you feel that, that, that there are. Uh, i- if there are, I'm not hearing of them.
No, I don't think that there are, just if it was something that you um. You know, hey, when I drive through the city, I hate that I'm seeing all this um, stuff outside all the time, you know, we can, we can incorporate something to take care of that. It's, it's just up to you as a, as a possible inclusion if need be.
I'm not seeing that as a problem right now, honestly.
Okay. All right, so the next section is special events. So these are just for events on private property. So anything to do with the city is taken care of in another section. Um, so this is really, there's three different sections in it, outdoor sales, seasonal sales and other events. Outdoor sales really refer to, you know, the sidewalk sale or um. That a tent sale, something like that, they're just putting items outside. Um, they can have two a year for seven days. Seasonal sales are things like pumpkins, Christmas trees, um, greenhouse items. They can do that for uh, sixty days during that season. And then other events are your, your one-day things like a concert, or I have a picture here, like someone, a bar uses their. Parking lot to do a bags tournament, which we had not that long ago, um, something like that. So Plan Commission um. Thought that two a year was, was a pretty low number. Um, so they were fine with staff looking at. Uh, we don't, we're not sure what that is, but possibly increasing that number to something to be a little more um, business friendly. And then reducing some of the current regulations for other events, just to make it um, a little easier for those businesses to host. These types of things, obviously, as long as health and safety. You know, there's, there's enough parking, fire trucks are gonna be able to get around the building, things like that. As long as those things are taken care of, they didn't have concerns with um, some of these uh, special items. So is that also acceptable to you to look into um, allowing more outdoor sales activities or just to keep the two a year? And then for other events, like your, your one-day type of events. That having less regulation, that business can just do those a little easier would also be acceptable?
Sounds good. Yeah, I find that, especially in times like this, I need to, think we need to give our business every opportunity they ha- they have.
Yeah, Jill, I mean, it all sounds just fine. I, I guess, are you, are you getting? Are you getting inquiries on these kinds of things for businesses?
Yes, uh, we do, we do get a fair number. Um, and we obviously keep track of the outdoor sales, cause that's only for seven days at a time, twice a year. So if someone, you know, if, if it's a Mr. B's or something, they can only do an outdoor sales event twice a year. So if they wanted to um, you know, a small boutique or something like that, wanted to have outdoor sales more than twice a year, they couldn't do it. Um, granted, if they just did it on the weekend and no one was paying attention, they, I don't know what kind of enforcement we would do, probably not much, but. Um, it doesn't give them the opportunity to go through the process and correctly get a permit to do it. Um, and then for those short-term things, they kind of have to jump through a fair number of hoops to be able to do that as well. So it'd be easier for businesses.
So how do we, so when you take a. Uh, you know, when you take the event center, for example. With their concert venues there, how does this, how does this impact that potentially?
Um, right, they, for something like that, um, we, we take those pretty seriously, cause that's a, that's a big. Area with a lot of people. They have had, you know, multiple tents or um, areas and the event center. Already has some outstanding parking issues, they're currently under. Um, they can't utilize all of their building because they're also under on parking, so. Their events um, in particular are a, are a little bit different because we're um. They're not allowed to use all of their buildings, they have some site stuff that they need to um. Get into code a little better before they can have larger events, but we do, they are required to give us a site plan. Um, and we look at that for compliance with, with health and safety and um, to try to get as much parking as we can. Um, but it still allow them to be able to do something there.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think of, you know, with concerts and tournaments, how, where that would apply. Where any changes would apply here?
Um, just for outdoor sales events, it would be the number per year that they could do more. And for, for the other events, it would just make the process easier for them to be able to do what they want. Um, and probably a quicker timeframe as well, cause it'd be a little less. Work for staff as well. If they were doing like a beer sales or something like that, they would obviously need to, to get those permits as well. Um, this would just be from the planning side.
Well, Mickey's is a, is an example, Mayor, in the past, you know, he was always saying that he was held up by his two events. Right, that he could only do the tent one on. St. Patrick's and then one other day, and it was really hampering him. Mr. B's, I know, you know, would have more too. Um, if they were able to, they do those two sales now.
Right. Well, and I'm focusing on this concert tournament area, just because I know that we've spent a lot of time. Really working on those things. Uh, to, I think, put ourselves in a position as a, as a community to. Not have a free-for-all all the time. And I, I remember that just because I've been around that long, but, so I'm trying to, uh, so I asked the question specifically to concerts and tournaments. Tournaments, you know, I, I, I'm thinking of tournaments like softball tournaments and volleyball tournaments and things that. Really run through our, our parks and recreation, but. Like a bag tournament in front of a, in, in front of a bar, for example, um. That, I guess that could be one example, and I could see where that's relatively innocuous, right? But a concert's a different story. And I, I guess I just want to be really careful in that specific area. In terms of, of any changes that we make.
Sure.
We've all had to deal with the issue of concerts for over a decade. So I just want to be really careful and have thoughtful discussion about your recommendations there. Everything else looks fine. The outdoor sale events, uh, you know, I think we want to be encouraging, I think Derek's point. Uh, we, you know, we, I think we want to partner with our small businesses now more than ever. Uh, but I just, we just need to be mindful of some of these other areas that we've had historic issues with, and it's taking us. Or it has taken us a long time to really get to a point where we can now manage it. I'd hate to undo anything there unintentionally.
Sure, no, that's an excellent point. Um, we can, as we continue to look into these, when we bring you some code language, we can. Make sure that those things like concerts or um, something that's especially maybe gonna have um, amplified sound. Uh, or maybe larger than, you know, an anticipated number of people. That maybe that would have a little more scrutiny.
Sounds good.
All right. Um, the next one I have is communication equipment. There's not really any issues here, the, the code is pretty robust, especially for. Um, what you can and can't have for different types of communication equipment regulations. Um, pretty much it's identical to all our neighbors as well. The only thing that we, we really wanted to discuss here uh, was uh, communication towers and. Coverage in the city particularly. So as of, as of right now, towers are only permitted in C5. Um, which is just Menards and Love's that area. Um, M1 and M2 and then city-owned property. So out on our western portion, there's only city-owned property. We don't have um, M1 or M2 uh, really past, past the highway, so. Some of those areas where towers could be placed in the city are few, and if um. The places that are available are going to be city-owned property. Um, so Plan Commission uh, just wanted to make sure that our. Citizens get, you know, the best possible coverage and speed uh, for different types of. Broadband and cellphone and things like that, uses that you would need a tower for. Also, some of our neighbors, um. You know, Urbendale or Waki or West Des Moines could also have areas that cover portions of the city with towers. Um, even though it's not technically in Clive, but it's gonna be close enough to cover those residents. Um, they were comfortable with continuing to allow those towers um, possibly in our parks or. Um, other city-owned property, obviously provided they're safe um, and meet the current regulation. So if that's acceptable to keep, keep those towers uh, on city-owned property.
Council, thoughts?
I think that's consistent with what we're doing right now. I, I'm fine with that.
All right. All right, now I only have a couple more here and we're, we're all done. So one of the newer items we were looking into. Um, and again, this is just a point of conversation, it doesn't have to be um, something that we necessarily. Uh, need to incorporate, it's just kind of a gray area for staff. There's not too much in the code. For regulating different types of outdoor vending options. So obviously, there's some things you do really need to keep outside. Um, propane is one of those, firewood is, is one of those. Um, for safety reasons, you need to keep those outside. And right now, we ask um, companies that, that do that to provide screening, have it on the side of the building. That type of thing, so it's, it's not noticeable. But then there's items like, you know, red boxes that we currently. Don't really allow because they can't be properly screened and they want them in the front of the building. Of course, they could have one inside, but that's not always an option in some places. Um, some of these items are also vague, like the picture I have in the middle. Actually took over in West Des Moines at a gas station. It's technically outdoor vending, cause it's a point of sale. Um, for windshield wiper fluid outside at the pump. Is it invasive at all? No. Does it bother anything at all? Is it really even a? An issue? Not in the least, but it's technically outdoor vending. Um, so if we did have something that regulated these types of things, we'd have to also consider the items that. Aren't an issue or an eyesore at all, and really just a convenience. Um, kind of the worst-case scenario that I included in here, um, the far, the far-right photos are um, things like Amazon lockers or. Um, this Walmart pickup area, this is not even in Iowa, but I had heard of them, so I wanted to find one. Cause you, you walk into this um, area and you. You know, scan your QR code on your phone and a locker opens up and you pick up your store items and you don't even have to go in. Um, it's, it's kind of a self-service thing. So I have anything here from. You know, windshield wiper fluid to a red box to um, to outdoor lockers. Um, so Plan Commission came, came to, um, after our discussions. Thought that, you know, outdoor vending is really gonna continue to grow and we should um, support some of these uses, especially kind of. After co- COVID, um, but do keep in mind site, site design and some regulation to keep, keep some of these items out of view. Um, but then also with that, keep them well-lit and safe, so if these Amazon boxes are maybe at a. You know, Walgreens or a gas station or something, they're not around the back of the building where no one's at and it's not well-lit. Um, so keeping some of that in mind, if, if these things are allowed, they're probably gonna need to be fairly visible. Um, just for safety concerns and things like that, so um, if you have some thoughts on, on these types of uses.
Well, Jill, you know, if you pull up to a convenience store today. Typically, you're gonna have a red box, you're gonna have firewood outside. You're gonna have a Blue Rhino propane. Uh, facility. Probably at bare minimum, so. And this just relates to, to, to outdoor ven- vending specifically, it's not the all, what else do we allow? Uh, you know, these places to put outside, this is just strictly, strictly vending?
Yes, it's just the, your kind of point-of-sale outdoor uses. That really, a lot of businesses don't want inside, or they don't have the room, or they're trying to incorporate it after the fact. Um, such as a, a red box, I think we got a call from a, a gas station fairly recently that wanted to put in a red box. And it was gonna be on the outside. And, and we said that wasn't gonna be allowed, because we don't generally allow outdoor vending without it being on the side of the building or screened. Um, with the new come-and-go that went in, also, we allowed. Uh, yeah, the propane tanks, obviously, they need to be outside, but they were on the side of the building and screened, so we allowed that, but with, with proper screening and site design.
Okay, yeah, because we do have a red box today. At a convenience store that I go to just almost every day, that's out on the front. At a convenience store that I go to just almost every day, that's out on the front side of the building.
Okay.
Um, but I, I think that has something to do though with the particular site that it's on. There, there's not a whole lot of other option for them to, to, to do things with. I just want to be clear about, about. Where this is going and what all it includes.
Right, and that's, that's a good question, and we're, we're not sure. Um, it's. You know, depending on what, what new things start to come up and what comes down the line. Um, it could be anything from small items to very large items or even separate buildings that would allow. These types of point of sale uses without walking into a store.
Any other thoughts from, from the council?
Well, I think we definitely need to allow it. I mean, I, I think. You know, what are the best practices and what's reasonable? I, I, again, I think. What Eric said earlier, we, we need to be flexible with our, with our businesses and we want them to be successful. So. I think that we just need to strike a balance, whatever that is, uh, but, but I do think we need to allow it.
Yeah, I, I agree. And it sounds like the, the commission uh, agrees as well, as long as it's tastefully done, design is considered. Placement, et, et cetera, uh, proper screening, i- if needed, et cetera, so. So are, are we really changing anything here, Jill?
Um, that's a good question. I mean, if someone um, came to us and wanted to. Put in, you know, the, the Amazon boxes, which I think are, you know, becoming a lot more popular. Um, so that's probably a good recent. And very plausible example. I'm honestly not sure what we would tell them. My guess is that they would need to put it on the side of the building at least. Um, and it may even need a small wall next to it, so you can't see it from the front. That's what we've done with. Other types of outdoor items that need to be outside.
So, so this is Doug. If I can just chime in with a, a little bit of context on that question. It's an important distinction to make, I, I think, because. Up to this point, the code has been defined in a way that limits. Businesses from having outdoor sales. You know, we, we restrict at the moment lawn mowers from being outside. We restrict red box. Uh, the only red box that we have, and that's one at the Come and Go, uh, that, that was referenced. Um, and that was really a mistake, if you will. Um, but we've, we've generally prohibited. These types of outdoor activities or outdoor sales within the commercial space. For many decades before my time at the city. That's really the question. We've tried to become a little more. Uh, accommodating within the framework of the ordinance, so although it may. We have stretched the interpretation, for example, with things like propane tanks or with ice. Machines that, that really don't fit inside of a building. We've said, well, we'll, we'll kind of justify that as being. Uh, not really conducive to the inside space. We'll allow it on the outside, but let's, let's try to keep it to the side or, or somehow kind of screen it or keep it out of the front. Uh, front door view lines. So we've kind of interpreted the codes to be a little more flexible. The question that's really before the council in this particular case is, is kind of ripping the regulations out. So um, you would start just allowing by right, and, and again, maybe there's some. Uh, provision or some requirement to, to keep it tasteful, but. But that's going to be pretty hard to deal with. I- it's mostly a question of black and white. Are, are you okay? With these types of things being in the front of our commercial spaces? Um, that, that's really the context to the discussion. Um, there's not going to be a whole lot of nuance. Uh, it'll be a question of, are they there or are they not?
So Doug, can you give us some examples of things other than the ice dispenser or the propane or the red box, which is what I'm used to seeing, and to me, those are. Nonissues, but you're saying it can be a lot more than that?
Yeah, you know, again, I, I think what we get into the concerns, um, there's, there's not going to be a real gray area. If, if we're saying that those types of things are acceptable, uh, outside, kind of front of view. Any of these other range of, of uh, vending machines that come out. Uh, you know, we, we don't currently allow soda machines being outside, that, you know, those could be available. Uh, certainly the Amma- Amazon box uh, kind of stuff makes us a little bit nervous, but, but again. You know, as times have changed, that may become the way of, of doing business and, and having commerce in our community. So a- again, we have certainly become more flexible over, over the last couple of decades, certainly. Um, we're really just kind of at this inflection point though of, of wanting to understand. If this flexibility that has kind of crept into our spaces over the last ten years. Uh, if that's something we want to continue with, uh, or, or not.
Well, well, Doug, I would, I would say that obviously our world's changing, and I think if some of these types of. Facilities could be done, and it, it's really, it's all about aesthetics, in my personal opinion. Um, it's about aesthetics and, you know, um. And um. You know, just looks of the neighborhood, acceptance in the neighborhood, for example. So these kinds of things, it seems like you have a little more to work with. But then the next step is, is. You know, the twenty-five cases of, of windshield washer fluid that's out in the parking lot. And, you know, whatever else. Um, loose products, et cetera, that, you know, that kind of thing. Um, is, is a, is another thing. Um, that definitely would have an impact on aesthetics on the outside of, of the facility, so. I think this is one thing, I think, I think, you know, then you could. Really step across into a whole other area. With unintended consequences. So I think it's important we be mindful of, of the difference. In our discussion. I don't think we solve this one very quickly. I think this, um, just based on our questions and. Uh, our discussion tonight, it's probably going to be a little bit more vetting. But clearly our world's changing. You know, the Amazon box scenario there looks pretty attractive, actually. It looks fine to me. But then what else starts popping up around the outside of the building? You know, and, and so that, that would be my question.
Sure, and staff can continue to look into these.
Eric?
A little bit with the advent of technology and our own winter group, you know, always pushing the boundaries of, of vending. Um, you know, we're going to see a lot more of this kind of stuff and, you know, uh. I understand that we want to have a, a black and white policy right here, but. Uh, Mayor, to your point, I think aesthetics is a part of it. How, how do we craft that policy that deals with both? The realization that times are changing, technology's changing, and yet we still want to have a, a quality look to it and, and not a junky look. So I, I do agree that I think we need to continue working on this one.
Sure. Staff can um, definitely do that and bring something back at a future date.
Anything else on that one, council, before we move on? Okay, Jill, go ahead.
Sure. All right, so the, the last new one that we were kind of grappling with here, again, this could. Um, not really need any regulation at all, and it's really just a discussion point at, at this time anyway, since. Cannabis sales aren't. Aren't um, legal in, in Iowa yet. So we have. Um, Med Farm, which is the photo here, this is over in Windsor Heights. So if, if something like this does come down the line where maybe. Recreational marijuana sales come, uh, come through, that. That we kind of have had at least a discussion that staff can, can go off of, so if. There's not a lot of warning to this type of thing, we have um, something to go off of. But of course, depending on what the state. Would end up passing as, um, as a law, we may not be able to do exactly what we'd like, but at least, um. We've had the discussion. So currently, if this were to get passed and. You know, businesses would start wanting to open in town, pretty much if you, if you sold um, these types of products. And they were legal for anyone to use, we would just treat it as a retail store and they could go into, you know. Any type of uh, C location, um, that allows retail currently. If they were a dispensary, where like Med Farm is, um, you, you need a prescription to go in and to purchase something. We would see that as a pharmacy and, um, they could go in wherever a, a pharmacy is permitted to currently go. Um, again, with a lot of these places, they want to be very reputable as far as I've seen. They want to do the right thing, because the. The better they look and the better, um, they service people and, um, blend in with the community, the more regulations. You know, state or federal government's going to be comfortable with. If they did any sort of manufacturing of product, it would obviously be limited to our manufacturing areas. So we just kind of had a real general discussion with um, Plan Commission. They were pretty um, amendable to what's currently in the code. They just thought for some of those retail locations, maybe if there was a little bit more restriction on where they could go. Um, or how they should look potentially. That they would prefer something like that. Uh, so we just had a real general discussion and that's, that's kind of where we ended up. So just seeing if. The council agrees with those findings.
Council discussion.
Yeah, I agree with what she said.
Yeah.
Me too.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Wow, I think that was about everybody. Wonderful.
Yeah, I mean, it basically goes along with what we have today, and the Med Farm today in Windsor Heights is in a. Is in a retail area. Whi- whi- which makes sense, particularly if it's legal and permissible. So. Obviously, we'd want to treat them uh, like any other business and uh, hope that they have uh, an attractive. Uh, business and storefront, uh, like any other would want to have, so that makes sense.
All right, and one last item. I have to bring back chickens, I'm sorry. Because it seemed like everyone was, was pretty split last time, um, so we just. Need direction on whether to pursue this or not. I'm only talking about chickens, nothing else. And uh, like I have on the slide, Waki recently allowed chickens, um. Some items that they require are twenty-five dollar annual fee. You need an online training through ISU or other approved class. I actually took the, took it today, um, because I looked into it and it was only twenty minutes long. It's a PowerPoint that you listen to. Um, that was pretty interesting, but it's not robust. Um, it's a, it's kind of an overview, but it does get into a lot of really important points on. Um, choosing species and what to expect and caring for them. Um, you know, if they're, what you're going to need for a yard and a coop and how to keep them safe and happy and all that kind of stuff. It did cover quite, quite a bit, but it's not overly detailed. Um, and like I said, it's, it's twenty minutes. Um, but just so you are aware of that, they allow six chickens max per half acre up to thirty, so. You'd need two and a half acres to be able to get up to that maximum. Um, you need a well-constructed house. You also need to um, have some setbacks. I believe it was ten foot off the property line, twenty-five from another principal structure. Um, Urbendale and Western One are still, you know, estates, pretty much farm only. Western One recently is, um. Has had some discussions again on it, and I believe from what I read in a recent uh, council meeting that they're going to gather some public input. From Western One citizens on, on how much of a want there is for this. So P and Z uh, debated this topic. They, they kind of fell on not wanting to allow them. Some, some members were strongly on that, some didn't really speak up a lot, so it was kind of divided like council was. The, the members who didn't want it were, were more vocal than uh, the ones that kind of felt indifferent about it. Um, but staff also, as a, as a different way to look at this, they, they could be considered something like a pet. Instead of livestock, especially for something like urban chickens. You know, a handful of small chickens, especially to a neighbor, may be very less invasive than a barking dog. Um, or, you know, I think four dogs is what we're allowed to have, or a combination of dogs and cats up to four, I believe, is what Clive has. Um, but they could be something, you know, that you'd get a, a license or an annual fee for, um, just so the city knows that you have them. In case there's an issue, and it wouldn't really be anything land-based use, so it wouldn't need to be in the zoning code. Um, we would need to get some other members of the city involved on that, um, to, to be on board and look into that, but. That's kind of where staff and Plan Commission ended up. Um, I think Doug had some thoughts on this as well, if you would like to address those.
Yeah, um, I, I would, as we've been kind of working through this topic quite a bit. And we wanted to at least get to a point of, of putting the stake in the ground, uh, providing a recommendation. Uh, so the council can react to that instead of having just kind of a, a general debate. But uh, from the perspective of, of kind of error, erroring on the side of. Of uh, what has gotten us to where we are, which is a great residential suburban community. Being very cautious about changing that environmental landscape uh, is concerning. And I think really the differentiation becomes. A topic of whether or not agriculture or agricultural, agricultural type uses really belong in the suburban landscape. And I, I think again, to err on the side of what's gotten us to where we are, which is a great community, residential community. There should be pretty significant limitations on agricultural land use. Certainly, if someone wants to have the garden or the uh, fruit tree or things of that nature. Those are incidental to the primary use of their house and home, not a big deal. Uh, turning their whole backyard into sweet corn or taking the production to a point where it's beyond. What would be utilized by the household, uh, does seem to be inconsistent with, with what we're trying to accomplish. Similarly, with the animals. Our thought process is again, is to err on the side of caution, limiting. What would be agriculture or agricultural uh, production. And if there was a desire to allow uh, chickens or ducks or pigeons. Or, you know, whatever it might be, that it's considered as we would cats and dogs and other pets. Because at the end of the day, um, as we're dealing with folks that have these animals on their premise. It, it really does come down to these animals are their pets. We're not seeing people uh, really use them for a production purpose. They're, they're really there to. Be a pet, be a companion, uh, be a hobby. In the case of chickens, sure, um, a couple of chickens will provide a few eggs and that's kind of fun. Uh, but it really isn't an agricultural use or production. And, and again, we think once we get into that vein, that it's inconsistent with uh, with. Good, high-quality residential suburban development. So our recommendation is, is to not have. The zoning ordinance address uh, urban agriculture in residential areas. However, if the council would like to explore uh, animals. That that be considered through a discussion over uh, animal control. Just as we have had previous discussions on cats and dogs and other things of that nature. So that's uh, that's generally where we're coming down uh, on this topic at this point. And um, again, would, would be happy to. And again, would would be happy to answer any questions about that.
Thanks, Doug. Good, good discussion. And I think fine summation of of the points. You know, really, how almost household pet versus agricultural use. Pretty distinctive there. But the commission didn't even want to pursue the household pet scenario. Is that right?
Yeah, but I would I would also say that this idea of of differentiating is something that we have just more recently came about. So that was really not part of the primary discussion with the Planning and Zoning Commission. It was really that question of of the broader urban agriculture area that would include both land culture and animals. So they were very much, again, wanting to err on the side of caution and and try to limit or otherwise not allow those types of uses in the suburban landscape.
You know, the last couple of requests we've had to explore this issue, one was several months ago when individual wanted to to bring this up as almost a service animal. And then a couple of years ago, a young man was interested in having chickens as pets. So again, as kind of these personal types of animals like a a dog or cat. I read a story or an article that talked about chickens being carriers of salmonella. And one of the fastest ways that salmonella right now is spreading is through the interaction of chickens as pets and humans right there. So to me, it'd be almost contrary, the argument that we just want to have chickens as pets when that could be very dangerous, the form spreading salmonella.
And I I read a similar article along those lines about some of these salmonella outbreaks that's occurring in the west western half of the country. And you know, it it's certainly real. It's certainly occurring more prevalently because people are having more and more of these chickens as pets. And also, unfortunately, I think in a lot of cases, people think it's really kind of a cool thing to do, but aren't necessarily becoming knowledgeable and educated on how to properly have a chicken as a pet. And and it could be the same thing with a dog, you know, someone that that doesn't treat it right and you get it into a vicious animal situation. It could be, you know, snakes or other things, other pets that people don't take care of and and get into those kind of circumstances as well. So those are all situations that that in my mind are managed on an animal control basis, not a land use basis. That's really the key differentiation in my mind. If we're going to put it in the zoning ordinance and talk about it as a use, then we need to have appropriate controls, setbacks, number, where we can place certain components such as the hen house and and those kinds of aspects where, again, I think those are things that from a production standpoint, probably don't belong in our community, suburban residential community. But if it's a one or two chickens that are really pets and they're living in, you know, extensions of the homes, that again, may be something different that you all want to want to take up.
Well, I'll just say, I don't know, at the end, I don't have real strong opinions about this one way or the other. But at the end of the day, we're we're a suburb. You know, we're not a rural community. Waki still has a lot of rural areas, and so I understand why why they are where they are. But it just seems like a Pandora's box to me. So I don't know, Doug, I could probably be convinced on the whole, you know, individual pet thing. But I don't know, it just seemed like a Pandora's box to me, so.
I'm interested in looking at a limitation to it. I haven't seen a reference to no roosters, but that seems like that would help on the noise side. And I did think the gentleman who came in to meet with us a few months ago had a pretty compelling story. I have been around chickens in a very nice community where my daughter lives in Silver Spring, Maryland. She doesn't have them, but their neighbors do, and you wouldn't even know it. So I'm relatively supportive.
Doug, how does this relate to like bunnies, for example? You know, you have a hutch to keep bunnies in if you got one or two as a pet. And it stays one or two, right? But what how do we deal with that today?
Ah, that's a good question. I'd have to go back and and read the code. I'm sure that we would somehow be able to limit the number. It may be a relatively large number, you know, maybe six or eight or 10. I don't know what the code would would limit us to, but I suspect that there is a threshold at which a person could have a a hutch of rabbits. Certainly, they could have a a hutch of pigeons. They can have a certain number of ducks. You can have a certain number of cats and dogs. You know, those are all animal control functions, not not land use or or, you know, use of property functions.
It it seems clear to me that we want to steer clear of the land use piece. And even to Ted's comments. You know, but really, from an animal control perspective, which means household type pets, right? With, you know, a small hutch or whatever it happens to be that, you know, that we're regulating. It seems like you treat it the same way, understanding that, you know, that Susan made the point, no roosters, right? And that always seems to come up as like firstly, people say, well, we don't have a rooster, but wouldn't want a rooster because that's what makes the noise. But then a, you know, a reasonable number, maximum number, et cetera. From an animal control perspective, and I think that's that's a real distinct line there and seems to make sense. I I don't know that I'm advocating for this one way or the other, but it seems like if chickens are it, and we haven't talked about goats or anything else, that we should consider it. Can you have them as a household pet? Can you have a small pig as a household pet? Or a tiny horse as a household pet? You know, then you get to Ted's Pandora Pandora's box. Possibility. So just so I'm clear, we're just talking about chickens only at this point. Is that right?
Well, again, I I think what staff is recommending is with with respect to the zoning ordinance and these general regulations that we'll be coming back to you with, there was this initial question of should we include provisions that would allow or be more flexible to urban agriculture as a as again, a use of property? And what staff is coming back to you with, and and similar to what P and Z had recommended, is no, we should not have more flexibility for urban agricultural uses. So I am proposing not to come with any new regulation that would allow urban ag in residential areas of the community. So in essence, we would leave the code language that is in place today, which unfortunately is a little bit in conflict. But it would not be within the zoning ordinance. If council wants to manage these types of animals, I would suggest that it be managed in the animal control provisions of the city code where some of the language currently exists for how we manage the 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 fowl and and chickens and and other types of animals today. But it it's not a land use issue from staff's perspective.
It seems to make sense that moving this along, that we that that we follow your recommendation to not pursue land use. And we can talk about, you know, animal control at another point. And that's really the key. That's really the key question here. So I am open, however, to looking at the the animal control, household pet aspect of things, to Susan's point. Because I it seems to me that could be managed. But this is a very, very different question. And it seems that we need to just move away from that. There there seems to be general consensus on that. Council, anything else on this topic? Hearing none?
That is the end of my presentation.
Well, thank you, Jill.
Thank you all.
Lots to think about and lots to continue to work on. So appreciate your time and your good work. And we'll look forward to our follow-up conversations on pets. Okay, we are now going to move to reports. Pete, I'm going to start with you.
Thank you, Your Honor. Wanted to talk with the council a little bit on some information from the Clive Chamber about businesses that similar to the city of Clive and their facilities are requiring masks. So one of our largest employers, Willis, are requiring masks. And that, I believe, that's not only for staff, but also for customers. Starbucks, At Home, and Kohl's are also there. Obviously, all of our medical providers, dental and vision, for obvious reasons, are requiring masks for staff and for visitors. And then restaurants in Clive, majority are requiring servers to be wearing masks. The office buildings, you know, the Chamber didn't have as much insight on all of them because they have such diverse uses, but they did say that it sounds like the one of our largest buildings, NCMIC, is still largely close to the public. They only have a skeleton staff that's going in and all of those folks are masked. So from a compliance standpoint among Clive businesses, looks like the overwhelming majority are taking that good public health guidance from our public health professionals and asking folks to mask up and do their part to keep the community healthy. Earlier today, I participated in a focus group with Capital Crossroads on Equity and Inclusion. The Capital Crossroads' current Equity and Inclusion statement was made back, I think it was 2014. And with a lot of the current public discourse, they're very interested in updating that and making sure it's responsive to the current community needs. So in the coming weeks, after our survey is reviewed by the focus groups, we will have an opportunity to share that more broadly in the community and keep working with that excellent team to build a statement that is a guidepost for not only businesses, but for everybody else who cares about this issue. Finally, I'm proud to say that next week, we have a tentative date for our goat check presentation to Clive Community Services for our first sort of bundle of sales from the goat masks, the goat t-shirts, and the goat signs. That check will be for $970. So we'll go out and make sure we get some good media on that and use it as an opportunity to keep everybody's spirits high and keep encouraging folks to do all those good social distancing practices, the mask practices, and everything else that we need to do so that we can keep getting our lives back to normal.
Pete, thank you. Interesting information. Questions, comments for Pete? Council? Okay, move to, let's see, I'm envisioning this in my mind. We're going to move to Ted.
Nothing, Mayor.
Thank you, Ted. Eric?
No report tonight, Mayor.
Thank you, Eric. John? John, you need to unmute.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you, John. Susan?
I'd just like to say that I participated in a White House call on Tuesday for elected officials. Every once in a while, I like to participate in those. And this one happened to be on return to school. And they had Betsy DeVos, the education director, and Robert Redfield, who's the CDC director, talking about how to most safely return. And it was really interesting to hear the CDC director focusing on everybody needing to wear a face mask all the time, basically. And he said, I'm not just talking about some people, I'm talking about everybody. And he has said the same this week in the media. So I just think it's worth paying attention to that conversation. And I'm so glad that we have passed a recommendation for people to wear masks in Clive. And thank you to Pete for providing the report. I am not experiencing good face mask wearing when I'm talking about, other than in some stores. So I'm not sure the message has gotten very far. But it needs to continue to filter out there. And whatever we can do to do that, I think we should be doing. I appreciate what the Ny Master firm did in responding to a request for guidance on what is possible to put out a stronger request or even a mandate for people in the community. And I recognize that it's, I think, good news that we would have the capacity to do it. It's not so good news that we would potentially face litigation from the state. I personally don't understand why we aren't being given direction by the state anyway, or by the federal government, as far as that's concerned. But anyway, I think anything we can do to continue to highlight the message to people, my expectation is, as students are coming together with the the potential for spread and taking that home, it's going to get worse here in upcoming weeks. So I'm concerned about that. Anyway, that's all I had to say tonight. Thanks.
Thanks, Susan. Yeah, what a what a topic that has become, for sure. And I know that we all that we all wrestle with it and want to see the same participation when we're out in public. So appreciate you sharing those thoughts with us. Michael, anything from your end? Michael, you still with us?
Yep, yep.
There we go. Anything for for the edification of the council tonight? I think you're still muted.
Well, I'm having a little trouble here, Ron. I'm good.
Okay. Madam Council, anything for us tonight?
Good evening. Nothing further. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Matt, we'll go to you.
Thank you, Your Honor. A few items tonight. Obviously, the storm recovery efforts are well underway. We have all the streets in Clive now reopen, following down power lines being addressed. We're now down to about 100 residents that are still without power. A lot of our neighboring communities are kind of in the 300 to 500 count range. Waki's is pretty much taken care of now. Ankeny, I think, is a little over 1,000. And then obviously, Des Moines is the still the biggest and has the biggest impacts with, I think, over 10,000 still without power. Customers or Mid-American customers in their community. Our crews, after kind of getting their feet underneath them the first day, were just kind of figuring out the process, particularly Public Works in terms of picking up debris, really made a lot more headway today. We're just trying to get a head start in some of those more heavily impacted areas on the east side of the community for debris removal, knowing that then we're going to make a final pass starting next Monday. Kind of what our process will be is Public Works will be starting from the east, working their way west, knowing that that's the heavy lift. We'll be throwing quite a almost two-thirds of our Public Works workforce at it next week to and using County Field and some other city property as kind of staging areas for the debris. And then parks, they will have crews working from the west towards the east, knowing that the west side had some had some debris, but not nearly as extensive as the east. So we're hoping to kind of chip all that as we're picking it up on the west and working our way east and then have the crews kind of meet in the middle. So as you can imagine, whenever you do a citywide collection of this sort, which we haven't done in a number of years, you end up with a lot more debris than that was probably contributed by the storm. I think I've gotten a number of reports of people trimming their trees and putting things out on the curb that might not have been storm-related. been storm related damage, but that is what we deal with. So something that could have been maybe a two week effort, might be three weeks now. So our, our target hopefully is by September 1st, is to have at least all of the debris off of the, the right of ways, off of the parking. And then we will start to manage the large piles of debris with County Field being probably the largest stockpiling area. We're trying to work on a regional approach to that. We've had some conversations with, you know, other cities, metroways authority of how we can maybe tackle all that shipping debris that we'll have after we go through the stockpile. So hopefully some, some regional efforts on that. But that's kind of an update on storm recovery. All parks are reopened, the trails are reopened. We'll have some debris that'll, that'll sit along the trails and the green belt for a little while until we get kind of caught up on things. And then we'll come back and clean those up. But the trail is open and all the city parks are open. We didn't have any damage to any city facilities. So we were, we were pretty lucky as compared to some other communities, particularly Des Moines, who had some pretty significant impacts. And of course, in eastern Iowa, Cedar Rapids is, it was pretty decimated by this event, a very unique event. Strategic planning, just obviously update on that. We've got that starting a week from today. I know a number of you will be participating virtually and just wanted to do a kind of a final check-in on that. I've got council member Jedkins, Edwards and McCoy participating virtually. I know council member Weaver, you were kind of maybe making a decision either way. At this point, I had council member Weaver, Klein and Mayor Sorkcina with Pete and I in the council chambers, wanted to check in to see if that was still, how you guys wanted to handle things or if there's been any changes there. Eric, I'm getting a head nod from Eric. Ted, have you made a decision yet or?
Yeah. I mean, if that's what we're going to have to get, I didn't want to do it if there was just going to be one or two of us. But if, if we're going to have enough of us, then, then yeah, I'll, I'll come to the council chambers.
Okay. We will plan on that. For those participating virtually, we're going to have binders for you all. I'm just waiting to get the final documents from Lyle Summick to print off. And then we will deliver that, John, Susan, and then Michael, hopefully we catch you before, before you're out of town and get you that binder. But otherwise, we'll be trying to drop materials off prior to sessions. All of the department directors will be participating virtually in any of that first session with the council. They'll be participating virtually and we'll be running it very similar to how we run these council meetings in terms of using the Zoom room and the council chambers and using the audio and mics in there. But we will ask for those that are in the council chambers to still bring your, your iPads or your device that you've been using because Lyle will want to see your face a little closer up. So he can kind of take visual cues when you guys are having your discussion and making sure that both the virtual folks as well as those in the council chambers are being kind of treated equally in terms of the discussion. So that's going to be very important for him as we do this. Also, I'm going to try to put together, I've got some kind of issue memos related to community broadband, regional water governance, some other things that I'm trying to get put together for you prior to, to give you some time to review that prior to strategic planning sessions. I'm hoping to get those out to you hopefully early, early to mid next week. Cause I know those will be some big discussion items to talk about during strategic planning. But with that, was there any questions or comments? You'll be getting some Zoom meeting invites from Pete here probably early next week. Any questions on how that process is going to work?
How much time do you think there'll be for a dinner break?
So he's done it a couple of different ways is what he's described to me. He's actually done it where people eat together on Zoom, just like we would in a, in a retreat setting and just have conversation, not necessarily about issues, but more just conversing. So it's really going to be the council's preference on that. Obviously we're going to, he, he said he takes more, more frequent breaks because of it being Zoom and, and how that can be kind of even more exhausting when you're in person just because of the visual nature of it. But he's had some really good success with it with other cities. In fact, used it for Waukees and is going to be using it for Grimes. And I believe is using it for Dubuque. Or no, he might've driven, driven to Dubuque. I can't remember how that played out this week, but with the storms, but he's had some good success. So we're, give it a try. So all I would ask is there might need to be some flexibility on how we do things with this being the first time of doing it for these kinds of long, longer sessions.
I just want to be able to plan to have some food available during that break.
Right. Right. And that's also something too, as if, if council, and this goes the same for the department directors that are participating virtually, if you need to get something delivered, please just keep those receipts in the, since you're obviously doing city business as you're going through this, we would normally be providing food to you. We will definitely reimburse that as a part of work on behalf of the city. So just keep your receipts. Also, the last thing I wanted to mention, just kind of a, a follow-up on kind of the COVID-19 discussion. The staff, we're still waiting for the final guidelines and kind of details of the reimbursement program that the state has, has come up with for the cities, for cities and counties as a part of the CARES Act or the Iowa CARES funding. We have pretty much our ducks in a row in terms of reimbursements. One of the big reimbursements that they're including in that is up to 25% of our public safety payroll during that time period. That pretty much alone is going to take us to our cap. And so to kind of keep things simple, more than likely we'll be submitting that to hit our $400,000 cap. And hopefully probably that first, well, definitely by that first meeting in September, we'll be bringing a resolution as required for the council to approve for that submittal. But again, we're still awaiting the details. There's supposed to be a web portal the state is setting up. I think they have, they used, they have selected a third party vendor to help them out with. So we are definitely on top of that. Trying to think of anything else COVID related. But yeah, that was the one main thing that I wanted to mention tonight. And then be happy to answer any questions that the council may have and any issues.
Thanks, Matt. Counsel, any questions from that? Well, hearing none. Matthew, any, any additional correspondence other than what was provided?
No, nothing further.
Thanks, Matthew. Counsel, anything else for the good of the order? Hearing none. I'm going to adjourn us at 8:16 PM. Thanks, everyone.